I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting slated for Thursday, June 10, 2021. Please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted.
Mr. Noel does excuse for this evening. Move to item four, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening of June 10, 2021. No support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda passes. Move to item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of 5:13:21. No support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda passes. Move to item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of 5:13:21. No support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes as well. Let's go to item number six, public comment for items that are not on this agenda or scheduled for public hearing. So anything that's not on the agenda, is there anyone out in the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, commissioners' comments. Ms. Doff?
None, thank you.
Mr. Berger?
I have none.
Mr. Honwick?
I have none.
Mr. Spiz?
I have none.
Mr. Bailey?
None.
Okay. There's no public hearing scheduled for this evening, and there is no new business scheduled for this evening. Let's move to item 10, unfinished business, the final site plan, applicant ClearView Homes for Manitou Hills. I'll give you a rundown of what we're going to do this evening. We'll have the petitioner come up. This is their second try at a final site plan. He'll come up, explain what he's done since the last time we met together, and what his intent is. And then we'll have comments from the township planner, township engineer, the fire chief, and the township attorney. At that point, we'll open it up to public comment, and then at that juncture, you guys will have three minutes to give us their comments. After that, we'll read in any comments that were sent to us for those persons that are not attendants today. After that, we'll close the comments section, and we'll move into commissioner discussion on the final site plan. So, step one, is the petitioner here. If you will, please step up to the lectern, give us your name and your address. Give us a synopsis of where we're at, and what's happening, and what your final...
Okay, thank you.
...object is.
Okay, thank you. Eric Kenezny and Jerry Griffiths, ClearView Homes, 811 East South Boulevard, Rochester Hills. We're here for final site plan approval for Manitou Hills. Since last meeting, we went back on the few comments that we received from the attorney and from the township planner and engineer. All of those items have been addressed and resubmitted. We received new letters back from all three. There were one or two small items that were new items, or items that needed additional information. Those items have since been addressed and resubmitted as well.
What are the two items that I can ask, real quick?
There actually were three. Township attorney asked for the addition of a general comment element flagged to be noted on the landscape plan in relation to the, they're not only street trees, but the unit trees. So that has been accomplished. That's page nine, or sheet nine in Exhibit B. And then Jim Sharp, township engineer, had two comments. One was with regard to the sanitary and water main easements, adding the calls onto the easement. So rather than just depicting them graphically, they're also shown in text separately in the master deed, but having a document that showed the calls on the survey itself. So that was done, and then actually updated based on Jim's comment. And then two additional pages, their WRC language for sanitary and water main easements, added into Exhibit B.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Carwell Wortman, Township Planning.
I remember you to go to the lectern.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Good to see everybody, and not have a stage to worry about falling off, and thank you, members of the public, for coming out. I'll do the quick version of this. If anyone has questions on details, let me know. So as a reminder, this is a final site plan request and a private road request. For site condominiums, which are subdivisions, but it uses a different Labor Act, the planning commission makes a recommendation of the township board, who makes the final decision. For private streets, you guys are the decider on that. It is a large undeveloped property in R2 single-family. As a reminder, the master plan calls for it to be a bit denser with smaller lots than what's in the R2 district. At preliminary site plan, both the applicant and the planning commission agreed that you were comfortable with it being developed at the current R2 instead of the R1. Let's see. As far as area width, height, and setbacks, this is page four of the report, for those of you following at home. All of the lots meet the minimum lot area and the minimum width. Maximum lot coverage isn't noted on there because it's just kind of imaginary footprints for the buildings, but that gets reviewed as part of the permit review, and it is noted on the site plan. A couple things that had been added from the last time you reviewed it is that driveway setbacks, a driveway has to be four feet from side lot lines, and if you have a side entry garage, that apron next to the door has to be 25 feet wide so you can actually turn to get in. Those have been added to notes on the site plan. For minimum gross floor area, your zoning ordinance has a couple of different sizes for buildings. If it's a one-story, you say it has to be at least 960 square feet. Two stories are 1,500 square feet with 900 on the first floor. The notes on there say that the buildings will be between 1,700 and 3,600 square feet, so it meets that. Natural resources, there is interesting topography on the site that's been noted, as is proposed final grading. I'll let Mr. Sharp speak to that if he needs to. There are wetlands on the area. The large wetland on the south, labeled Wetland B, is a state-regulated wetland. It's adjacent to Manitou Lake. It's very large. On the site plan, that is noted, as well as the 25-foot natural feature buffer from that, and the grading and site disturbance will be beyond that 25 feet. There are two other wetlands on there that are not state-regulated, and so they don't get the same protections. A very small one is in Lot 1. Another one north of the road is being used as a stormwater detention area, and that, even though it doesn't have a natural feature setback, it has an easement area for that stormwater management, so it kind of functions as if it were that. Let's see. It will be, all the lots will be accessed by a new private road that will access from Dakota Court, which is a public street, to the west. The road meets the developmental standards outlined in your zoning ordinance as far as length. Because there are less than 20 units, it doesn't require secondary access point. The only thing we note is make sure the fire chief is satisfied with the circulation. One thing that has been done from the plans is there was, that you previously saw, was there was some tension in where the no parking signs were supposed to go, like the hydrants were shown on one side of the street, but the signs were shown on the other side. The text said they're on the same side as the fire hydrant, and that has been cleaned up from what you saw previously. For essential services and utilities, it will be connected with township water and sanitary sewer in multiple points. The easements are shown on there for all of them, and I'll let Mr. Sharp speak about the stormwater management system a bit more. For landscaping and screening, the landscaping plan shows two trees for each of the lots, which is what zoning ordinance requires. There's not going to be any lighting with the street lighting with the proposed development. And one thing that has changed from the previous plan you saw is that there is no longer a sign, an entranceway sign. It's not required by the zoning ordinance. Many developments like to do it. My understanding is it was removed because the spot where you'd want to put it is conflicting with the stormwater management system, so it's just been removed. As far as architecture, Exhibit B has included a couple of plans and elevations for potential buildings there. Exhibit B also has, or the bylaws have, language about the minimum square footage appearance and garages. For the master deed and bylaws, a couple things to note. Township attorney approval for those documents should be conditioned, as well as township engineer approval. And, again, just a reminder that planning commission action would be a recommendation to the township board for the site condominium, and you guys would be making approval for the roads. And that's what I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp? Engineering?
Yeah, the plans were pretty much as similar, the same as they were before, just the applicant cleaned them up a little bit. Just as a reiteration, though, as Zach had mentioned, the sanitary, this project will be serviced from sanitary sewer that is on Dakota Court. The water distribution system will be connected at three different locations for stormwater. Let me start with the roads first a little. They are proposing just asphalt roads with swales adjacent to them, help pretreat the water, but there will be additional pretreatment structures for the storm system. There will be a detention pond on the north side, and then on the south side, there is pretreatment before it heads into the wetlands and out into Manitou Lake there. So that is being addressed. And again, as the applicant had already mentioned, really, there were just a couple of minor items in our review with regards to the master deeds that needed to be addressed. But if you have any questions with regards to the infrastructure, be happy to answer those. All right?
I've got a question for you. So the stormwater on the south side?
Yes.
There was a calculation on the site plan for...
There is.
...the level in Lake Manitou as a resultant of that. I assume the north side's got nothing to do with it, right? Because that's a retention pond?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. That's retention up there, and...
Not even a tenth of an inch?
Of the overall Manitou. It's on the plan. I don't, I could grab it real quick, but yeah, it's very, very small, based on the outflow and how big the lake is itself, yes. It's like an inch or something, during a 100-year storm event, too.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Chief?
Again, the plans, nothing has changed as far as the fire department's concerned. The signs were moved to be on the proper side of the street where the hydrants are. Flow pattern is fine with the cul-de-sac at the end of the street for turning radiuses and everything. Street name and everything is okay, so we have nothing else to add at this point.
Okay, thank you. And Eric and Jerry, you were aware of the latest attorney's letter, you said, and addressed those two items, correct? Okay. Good. Okay, then, let's move to public comment. I will give an opportunity to the public to come up to the lectern, state your opinion, concern, what have you. You have three minutes to do that. We're just going to collect those comments and concerns, so when you come up to the lectern, please state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone out in the common, or, I'm sorry, out in the public wishing to comment?
Good evening. Susan Montgomery, my address is 10...
Will you pull that down just a little bit, Susan?
Ah.
Thank you.
Easy deal. Address is 1044 Inca Trail, and I'm president of the Manitou Lake Association. The wetlands between Manitou Lake and the proposed Manitou Hills development include a stand of wetland tamarack trees. While there's separate site plan for street-facing trees that are considered landscaping, the tamarack trees are nowhere to be found in the site plans, and we want assurance that they won't be left intact, and also, it kind of removes a point of reference for someone who is interested in preserving the wetlands. And our second concern, I have three. The yard for the condominium units, or the envelope, does not include measurements that would determine proximity to the wetlands. Again, we would, some kind of frame of reference to understand. They appear to be directly adjacent to, the site plans appear to make the units adjacent to the wetlands. There's only a very narrow soil boundary noted just before the wetland buffer, again, with no measurement indicated unless you look at it relative to the 25-foot buffer, so I'm guessing maybe 10-foot. Since the land is so low at this point, I mean, it's really low, relative to the lake level, we're wondering, does soil boundary indicate dirt that is brought in to build up so that buildings can have a basement? At the same time, we feel that this is strong evidence for a need to put in the bylaws and advise the homeowners of the wetland proximity to their home so that they can treat the environment with respect. Also, finally, our third point is, they show 12-foot storm sewer and access easement in the site plans. It's drawn within that easement is an arrow design, and it's not on the accompanying legend, so it's not clear to us what that represents. We're hoping you can tell us what that arrow, I mean, I have a little picture of it, but what it represents. We're kind of concerned that it represents a dock, and would like assurances that that is not the case. I hope I was clear on all that. Do you have questions on what I...
No, I've noted your concerns.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thanks for the letter. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak or comment?
My name's Gary Suits from the Lakes of Indian Wood Homeowners Association, and I sent you guys a letter, dropped it off yesterday to the office. Hope you had a chance to read it. We've been kind of following this program for the last three, four, or five months, trying to get, just general questions, and been trying to work with. The new company that's coming in to try to get our deed restrictions so on more aligned, so we have similar type expectations and so on from our homes and so on, and property values in the area. So I put that on the cover letter, and then I included a note that I had sent to ClearView Homes. It had 20, 22 items on it, and questions, and we've not been able to get those asked. But I noticed your meeting minutes from May 13 had 14 items on it, and I didn't, wasn't able to track exactly item for item, Zach, or you, sir, whether you answered all those 14 items in your meeting minutes, if you addressed those directly. But those are certainly outstanding items that, at this point, to make an approval on if you guys aren't happy with it. I just wondered, are there still outstanding items from your list? And then going back to my cover letter, I kind of, I kind of said, three main items. Can we ask that you please mandate the builder use a dedicated construction entrance from Drainer to Pathfinder to Iroquois to Dakota to Manitou? We've put up with an extreme traffic situation since the M24, construction this past year, and we'd really like to get our subdivision back into a family-safe environment with all this heavy traffic going through. We do not want construction traffic entering from Wood or Indian Trail. The other item I have here on my cover letter is, we're concerned about construction traffic damage to the roads in our sub, and we ask for a contingency fund, that the builder would establish to ensure that we, at the conclusion of construction, that we'll have safe and passable roads. And lastly, we just wanted to make sure that, in the case of Meg Knopf, that, you know, there's no kind of conflict of interest or anything with Mr. Leenoff, so it's no personal attacks or anything, it's just, we just want to make sure that we're not getting into any, you know, conflicts of interest or anything like that. So we wanted to make sure that was, that was answered. I think we have a number of our residents that have, also have some questions, but that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Ron Pullman. My wife and I live on, at 1591 Dakota Court, so we're directly going to be impacted by the construction of this development. I'm hoping that you've had a chance to read Audrey, or Jerry O's, letter that she sent in with her concerns. Our concerns on the street are three. First one is property values. We think that this development would adversely affect the property values of the people who live on Dakota, and also people that live in the Lakes of Indian Wood subdivision. And why is that, why does that happen? It's because there, there's a really incompatibility with what, how they're going to be building their homes, and what is going to be allowed in that subdivision, or that development versus what we have on, in Lakes of Indian Wood. Things like outbuildings that they allow, we don't allow fences, front-facing garages, parking on the street. Audrey said something about a possible cell tower, because there was a telecommunications note in their plans. And also, their homes are going to be smaller than our homes in Lakes of Indian Wood. Their bylaws on page 11 state 1,700 to 2,200 square feet. Lakes of Indian Wood starts at 2,200 square feet and goes to 2,700 square feet. So I think that would be a negative to our property values as well. Second thing is safety. Right now, there are four occupied homes on Dakota Court, and one that's being built, has been, has been built, or being built for like three years. And we think that 18 new homes is going to like quadruple the amount of traffic on our street on Dakota, and we think that's a problem with safety. The woman talked about possible environmental concerns. That's another issue that we have. And one of the things I did was I printed out some, an aerial view of the Walden Meadows subdivision that's off of Walden Road, a before and after picture, if you're interested in looking at that. And I don't know if you've been down our street, but I also took a couple pictures of Dakota Court and the woods that are, that they're going to be ripping out, really. So they're really proud, I'm sure, of the 40 trees they're going to plant. My estimate is probably 400 trees are going to have to come out for them to build those homes. So...
Yeah, you can leave them here. Thank you.
So why does ClearView want to build homes off of Dakota instead of off of one of the other streets, the north of Dakota? That's because they, they get to take advantage of all the amenities and the prestige and the character that is in Lakes of Indian Wood without having to pay the HOA fees and so forth. We maintain our own roads in that subdivision, and there's going to be a lot more traffic coming out of there, of this development. Also, we have parks and landscaping that we, that we pay for out of our dues. I think in 2015, there was like $200,000 that we spent on signage, landscaping, and upgrading the general feel of our, the Lakes of Indian Wood sub, so I think that's why they want to build it there. And my request is that they actually take that, the entrance to the north to a subdivision that's much more in character with what the typical ClearView subdivision would look like. So I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Dave PC, 1834 Twin Lakes Boulevard, Oxford. One of the questions that's come up is the access to Manitou Lake from this subdivision, and it's been pointed out that they supposedly will not have access, but yet we have the settlement of Manitou, which was developed with the same kind of guidelines, and we have people who have built docks through the wetlands, and have, there's never been anything done about it. We brought that to the attention of the DNR when it happened. Two years passed, and the DNR said, "Sorry, they're grandfathered in." So I am concerned that the same thing will happen here again with these homes, and I'd like to know what kind of assurances we have that somebody's going to monitor this and make sure that it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name's Michelle Kozlowski, I live at 1090 Inca Trail. I just purchased my home, and I bought into the lake and the community, and it's really a special place if you've never been there. I'm very concerned about this development. I guess based on the previous development and how the wetlands have already been disturbed, there has to be something in the bylaws that prevents them from disturbing the wetlands. That way, as residents, we have recourse to go back and say, "You can't do this." And we would need the township's help, somebody's help, to give us that reassurance, and I think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
Brian Russell, I'm at 805 North Lapeer Road. And I just want to encourage you people not to dismiss the public comments too casually. I've served on boards like this in the past, and I kind of know a lot of how the program goes, but there are legitimate concerns about home values, about the access, the traffic. These guys could have designed it coming in off the, off the trailer park, but, you know, they want to come through the nice neighborhood naturally. And I think that the environmental concerns are legitimate, and I know that there have been letters sent and some photographs and stuff turned in, and I hope you people will get together and look at it before you vote and discuss it earnestly. Because I know there's a lot of momentum that builders have their rights, and people that have bought property and want to develop it, they have their rights, and there's a lot of fear about lawsuits, there's, but you do have some control, and these are the constituents that live here. So I just hope that you'll discuss them earnestly and take them into consideration. I also, you know, for myself, I think that what was pointed out about the access to the lake and how that can change over time and become grandfathered, you can imagine how frustrating that is. Right? So if there are things that you can do to make sure that that happens to a condominium or type association, that, you know, should be encouraged. So that's really all I have to say, is please, listen to the people, don't just brush it off because you have consultants. We know that the fire chief is okay, the safety guys are okay, the township manager's okay. We understand that, understand about how development goes, but there are legitimate concerns that have legal basis. People are less likely to sue than a developer, I get that, but you really should consider it. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
My name is Pam Copery. I'm at 1054 Inca Trail in Lake Orion. I would just like to reiterate what people have said about the environmental controls and concerns... and concerns on that lake. And I would also like to invite you to look at Google Earth, because there, I think, they show a very good picture of how people in the settlement of Manitou have built docks probably 25 feet long through the wetlands into the lake, and they really do not have any rights to do that, and yet, there's probably about seven or eight new docks in there. And I'm just thinking, with 18 new homes, if people do the same thing, it's really going to negatively impact the lake. So I invite you to look at Google Earth and see those new docks that have been in there in the last 10, 15 years, because it really, that development has very much impacted the lake, and we are concerned about how this new development might impact the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public?
Thank you. My name's Chris Ball. I live at 1028 Inca Trail.
Is it Chris Ball?
Ball, B-A-L-L, not the basketball player. I've lived there for 19 years now, and I watched the change in the northeast side where this other condominium development is, and it is very dramatic. Again, I'm reiterating what the other people said, I don't have anything to add, but the change, if you go around in a kayak, a small boat, or a pontoon boat, the changes is sad. And to think of that happening here, that what's at stake here is all we have left that keeps the lake clean and natural. It's like a tipping point to me. If you start eating that up, the lake will change forevermore and will be irreversible. So just, again, I reiterate what other people said, please listen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak?
I'm sorry, I would just like to add one thing. I didn't mean to be disrespectful, and I really appreciate you guys being on these committees. It's a pain. It's not a high perks, high-paid job, I know, and your volunteerism is really appreciated. And just wanted to add that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm Tom Bailey. I'm over on Chieftain Circle, 1775. As many of the people have stated here, the traffic is going to be a big deal if the 18 homes are added. The number was brought up at the last meeting, I don't remember quite what it is, but in the Lakes of the Indian Woods, there is no sidewalks. We have many, many people, bicyclists, joggers, families with young children. The streets are very, very crowded. It would be a terrible safety hazard if that traffic came in, or the additional traffic was added, or the construction was added to Dakota Court. There's various other routes that they could get in off of both Drainer and I-24, but to me, it's a big safety hazard. Thank you.
Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Or make a comment?
James Burner, 1553 Wood Trail. Been a resident of Lakes of Indian Wood for about four years. Suffered greatly with the traffic that comes through that sub. Obviously, I'm on the other side of the sub based on where this development is, but it seems to me that if they're going to attach into our sub, they should have the same rules that we have to live by. So site condominiums, seems like that's going to draw down our property values, so it doesn't seem very fair to me that we're going to allow them to build this and attach it to our sub. And the poor people that live on that street, I mean, it's a very pretty cul-de-sac, and there's homes that are being built in there that are $800,000, $900,000, and now they're going to be attached to a condominium development. So I mean, that's kind of a bad rub for them. So that would be my comment. Okay?
Anyone else out in the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's move to Commissioner's comments. Questions, concerns, reasons for voting for or against. Sure, Mr. Homing.
Everybody that submitted a letter spoke, except for Regerio.
Yes, and I'm sorry, that is true.
Does she want to speak?
Is she here?
Do you want to?
I submitted that letter, and I wanted to run through them.
No, he should read it in the record.
You have to read it verbatim.
He'll read it in the record.
Unless you want to discuss it yourself.
I don't come across like James Earl Jones, so bear with me. Date of June 7th, 2021, addressed to the Planning Commission. Lakes of Indian Wood would like the homes to be compatible with ours. The PC members seem to understand the importance of this and protecting our property values for the good of the community. At the May 13th PC meeting, Mr., I don't know how to pronounce your name, Eric.
Kenedzie.
I'm sorry?
Kenedzie.
Kenedzie. Spoke about the resale of a home he built in the Lakes of Indian Wood that is located on Iroquois. He used his home to illustrate how his homes in Manitou Hills will be comparable to this ClearView home development. The Iroquois home was built to the standards slash requirements of the Lakes of Indian Wood. Manitou Hills will be built to the standards and requirements of ClearView only, as defined in their documents. Compatibility. One, home evaluations indicate front and side-loading garages options. Lakes of Indian Wood only allows side-loading. Two, Manitou bylaws refer to the one detached garage or ancillary building not attached to the residential dwelling may be constructed on any unit. What does this mean? Manitou bylaws, Page 11, Section B. Three, doghouses. Manitou bylaws, Page 14, Section 4, Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow doghouses. Four, sheds or outbuildings. Manitou bylaws, Page 14, Section 4, Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow either of these. Front yard maintenance is regulated. Manitou bylaws, Page 14, Section 5, kindly include rear yard also. Number six, chimneys located in the front or side yard elevations to be covered in brick, as is in the case of Lakes of Indian Wood. Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow for the use of vinyl aluminum on exterior surfaces. Manitou does. Manitou bylaws, Page 11, Section D. Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow for the storage or recreational vehicles unless it is an enclosed garage. Manitou allows for them to be in garage or on a driveway. Manitou bylaws, Page 16, Section 11. Number nine, Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow the parking of commercial vehicles, no matter the size or ownership. Manitou allows for vans and pickups no more than one ton and used by a co-owner in his personal business or profession. Manitou bylaws, Page 16, Section 11. Number 10, Lakes of Indian Wood does not allow fences except to enclose a pool. Manitou Hills will allow them to enclose a rear yard. Manitou bylaws, Page 14, Section 7. Concern with the discharge of the storm sewer on the rear of Lot 18 in Manitou and adjacent to Lot 217 in Lakes of Indian Wood. Condominium Act 59 of 1978, 559166, Section 31, requires the developer to provide floor plans. Page 7 to 7 shows one floor plan but states example of many floor plans to be offered. Condominium Act 59 of 1978, 559131, Section 31 speaks to a convertible area. I do not see an area called out. I do not see an area that is called out on this. Condominium Act 59 of 1978, 559132, Section 32 speaks to an expandable condominium project. I do not see an area called out. Manitou Master Deed, Page 19, Section 9, speaks of telecommunication agreement. Could this include a cell tower? Manitou Master Deed, Page 6, speaks of if sidewalks ever installed, I believe sidewalks waiver was given, what would be required for this site plan change? How will you maintain the heritage trees along Dakota Court, or are they to be removed? Install or maintain buffer screening on lots 1 and 18 adjacent to Dakota Court. Install or maintain buffer screening in rear yard of Lot 18. Attention to the aesthetics of the side elevation of the homes on lots 1 and 18 adjacent to Dakota Court. Will there be a sales trailer? If so, we ask that it be in the interior of the site and not adjacent to Dakota Court. Provide adequate parking on the site for home buyers. No advertising signs to be placed on Lakes of Indian Wood property. Concern with the language in the Master Deed, Page 12, Section 2, withdrawal of land. Roads. One, it appears that our concern with the maintenance of the private road has been addressed, Page 7 of the Master Deed. Concerns with construction traffic. Can there be a dedicated route? Who will be responsible for repairs of our streets, cleaning of the streets, and repairing damage to private property? Three, consideration of road bond with the Road Commission of Oakland County, I'm sorry. What are the hours during which construction will occur? Will there be any interruption to public services in Lakes of Indian Wood? How will notifications be handled? Any utility installations taking place on Dakota Court? Will there be grading of this property, or will developer be working with the natural topography and the contours? In concert with the bylaws, Page 12, Section G, tree removal and landscaping, and I, standards for developer association approvals, the developer currently intends to take into account the preservation of trees and of the natural setting of the condominium and passing upon plans, drawing specifications and other submissions. Kindly add language that states, "The development of Manitou Hills shall start with the clearing of only the trees necessary for the installation of the roadway and public utilities adjacent to the roadway. Additional trees shall be removed on each lot only after lot is sold and tree removal is as stated." On Page 12, Section G of the bylaws. We do not expect this development to be handled like the woods of Tullamore, land clear cut before construction even commences. Lastly, did the PC members visit the site? Did the PC members read the Master Deed and bylaws? Did the township refer to the Lakes of Indian Wood deed restrictions bylaws while reviewing this site plan? I served on the Planning Commission in Rochester Hills for many years, and I understand the review process for a development like this. I appreciate your attention to the matter. Thank you, Audrey Regerio. 1643 Creek Court, Oxford.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to Commissioner's comments and discussions. I know I have a few things, but I'll let the rest of the commission start.
I'll start, Mr. Chair. You want me to start?
Sure, please do.
It might take me a minute, because I was taking notes on certain documents as people were addressing their concerns. I think, Eric, could you get up to the electric person? I think I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. I know we're dealing with a site plan, so I know how we have to work with the R2 district and what's allowed and permitted through that process based on the township's regulations. I get that.
Sure.
But the people did have some nice questions they asked in regards to, if there could be a considerable construction route, would you be willing to make sure we could do something like that to help them through their neighborhood?
Yeah, we have no problem requesting that all the construction traffic come off Drainer.
And how would you go about doing that?
The only way we can is inform everyone, and as long as everyone that's involved allows us to, we'll post signs at the entrance, both of them, if that's what's requested by town.
Well, and that's what I meant, because originally, people didn't want any signs in their neighborhoods at all.
Yeah, I mean, that comment was made tonight, so if that's requested and allowed, then I'm more than happy to post signs at both, one saying, "Construction entrance only," off of Indian Wood, and the opposite off of Drainer.
I think it would be helpful to maybe help create some kind of a way to put, I know they're public roads, I get it.
Yeah.
And they're even putting money into their own road networking on behalf of the fact that they live on county road. I got another question. Is that a platted development? Are you guys on platted properties, or are you on single-family detached condominiums also? Would you answer that, please? Platted subdivision on county roads. Okay, that's, thank you. There are some developments around Manitou Lake that are platted subdivisions and some that are not. They're PUDs or site condominiums. So we have a mixture there when someone talked about the docks, and I looked at, I went on Google Earth, and I looked real quick, sitting up here, to see if we had docks, and there are several docks in Manitou Lake, on Orion's side, Oxford's side, all around. So I guess it's kind of confusing there. I think the grades are really, really steep on the south side of that proposed roadway there. So could you just give me a little synopsis of what you think you're going to do to develop houses on those properties? Because when I look at the roadway and I look at the setbacks, you know, your building envelope that that house is going to sit back, and I don't care if it's Lot 14, or 13, or 16, or whatever one it is on the south side, but like when you get to those rear yards that are dropping as fast as 10 and 12 feet from the topo that I'm looking at, how are you proposing to handle that? When one of the people from the public got up and asked, "What are they going to do for rear yards?" You want your engineer to handle that question? I would have asked.
Yeah, I mean, just in general, we've already done all of the proposed grading and took into account a ton of consideration before we even submitted this. And I want to make a comment that you actually brought up about the current zoning. It's zoned R2 right now. If you look at the usable space that's there, we could have easily came in and proposed a development that clear-cut the place and probably been standing here proposing about 40 homes.
I realize what could happen.
Yeah, we didn't. The one other comment related to that, the future proposed by the township that's already out is R1, which is even more dense. That actual future land use actually proposed would have been about 70 homes. That's what was, the township had proposed.
Are you talking about the future master plan?
Yes, exactly. That's what it currently shows. But currently zoned, just flat out what it currently is, R2. We could have clear-cut the place, mass-graded, and been here with 40 homes. So we didn't do that, and we didn't want to do that.
Well, then let me ask another question. I'll interrupt.
Sure.
And then you can go back.
Yeah, no problem.
The one lady spoke in regards to developing the property where you wouldn't clear-cut it and take all the trees down and let maybe an owner come in and pick a lot and say, "Okay, I'd like to develop my lot around this because of the nature of what I have here." Do you have intentions of trying to do any of that?
Yeah, our goal and plan always in any development is only clear the trees that are necessary for the development itself and in the building. It's what we always do. Right in all of our purchase agreements, we have a statement that basically says, "All we've been clear, even if requested, is 15 feet around the house." And you of all people, Tom, know that's tight. We keep it as tight as humanly possible.
I understand, I'm just asking, I want you to say it here at this meeting.
Yeah, I'm saying it. I just said that is our.
So that if that doesn't occur, then you know, we can say something else about what you made a comment to.
It's what we always do. We're going to clear the trees that are necessary for the development and in the building of those. Same thing we always do. We're not going to clear-cut lots to the property lines or anything, even similar to that.
Did I not read in your bylaws as well that outside that envelope, you can't eliminate any tree with a six-inch diameter?
Sure.
Or bigger, correct?
Correct.
Well, then Eric, do you have any feelings as far as restrictions for docks into the wetlands areas? Are you going to just allow what's going to be naturally done, assumed possible if they went to Eagle Ford?
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't have a hard stance either way, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't feel it's our obligation or right to regulate. That's what DQ is for, and you know, but that being said, if you look at the site, we actually own a large, large chunk out into the wetlands and into the lake. And as you can see.
Well, I looked at the property line, if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm commenting, the property lines of the homes that are back Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm commenting, the property lines of the homes that are backing to the wetlands, they don't extend all the way to the lake. So those property owners, as you can see on the screen, they don't own all the way to the water's edge. So they technically, unless somebody's going to break the law, which, I don't know how I can regulate that, they don't have the right to put a dock through common areas. No one has the right to go onto any common area without permission and just do something.
Are you telling me that within the deed restrictions then, there's a common area on that south side of that property that wouldn't allow them to then get access to that point?
Yeah, you can see it right on the screen.
And is that in, is that in the plans of the, which set of documents? You have three different documents altogether for this development. So is that within the grading documents or is that within the final site plan documents?
Yeah, the grading plan shows it right there, the boundary of the southernmost units, right?
I think it was on page four, am I correct or not? Because I looked at all the pages within those grading documents.
I think, Tom, it's right here.
Do you have it right now on the screen? I'm trying to pull it up too.
Are there condo docks?
Yeah, on the condo docks?
Sheet 3 is a condo dock.
Sheet 3, okay.
They don't have elements.
Okay, I was looking for it on the computer earlier.
But Jim, isn't it true the DQ or Eagle, you can't touch that 25-foot buffer? That's supposed to be as this. They can't grade it, they can't touch it, correct?
That's township ordinance, 25-foot buffer.
Well, I didn't want to get into township ordinance yet. I was just trying to ask the question if they had a right to then technically even get there legally.
No.
He said no.
That's true.
So that's, that's the question I'm asking, irregardless of what township ordinance says, what we can do within the buffer, the 25-foot buffer from the delineated wetlands? Because I looked at all that too. I'd looked at these documents in length.
Yeah, it's a general common element, as he stated, there's no way to get legally from the unit itself to the lake.
Who enforces the rule?
Who enforces, well, who enforces any rule?
Well, I'm saying, if somebody violates it, who enforces it?
The HOA can enforce it. I mean, no different than any violation of any subdivision.
Well, common areas are regulated by the HOA through the bylaws.
Yeah.
And that's within the bylaws, right?
Correct.
And it's not really the wetland by Eagle.
The other, you know, it said something about an exhibit be a minimum of square footages in garages. Are you, are you telling me you only, you have a 1,700 square foot minimum, correct?
Correct.
And up to what?
3,600.
3,600, I heard?
I don't think that's maxed in the documents.
That's not in the documents, right? The 1,700 and 2,200 is within the documents, right?
Yeah, it's talking about typicals.
Two-story versus a one-story, yes.
Okay, so that's what's in the documents.
Correct.
All right.
No max.
And I, I understand that I can't regulate that. I mean, we're within township guidelines of what we're allowed to do in our two zoning district with what's regulated for that.
We're well above.
I get that. I like what some of the people commented about outbuildings and fences. We're a little problematic on that point from the township's point of view because the township does allow fencing and they allow detached accessory buildings that are incidental to primary use. So from a site plan point of view, this is not a PUD or anything regulating that. So we're, I appreciate the comments the people made from the public on it, but the township's kind of held at, well, at bay, I guess I would say, because it's within our own township guidelines that that's a permitted factor. And I appreciate the comments that came up on it. Docks in the wetlands, the Google Earth, I did look at that. And I appreciate the letters that the people submitted because it gave me time to read them at home and then reread them and try and get the full aspect of what's going on. But some of the things I feel sorry about because as a site plan, as a site plan and what they're permitted to do in the R2, we're somewhat stuck to work with them as long as we have them comply to the regulations within that zoning district. So I'm concerned that we're going to comply to all those things tonight. And when we try to make a motion, it may be me, I want to be as transparent as possible to make sure that everybody understands that some of these things by the rules and regulations of what we're dealing with here for this district are going to be met and maybe not meet everybody's intentions that they would like to have seen met, but we'll try to do the best we can with it. Because we're, we have an approved preliminary site plan that was done back in March when it was submitted. We had another meeting in April, which I wasn't in attendance on and didn't get back from Florida until after that, but when I came back, I tried to get back up to speed on this thing. So I can tell you that from my point of view, I listed, I listened wholeheartedly, but some of these things were not, we will not be able to regulate with what you want based on how we're currently dealing with the township's regulations for that district. So just so you know upfront, we're going to try and do the best we can. And we will make sure with some of the private road conditions and some of the other things that have to be met, I think we're going to do an okay job with that part of it. That's all my comments for right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
No problem.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, this commission doesn't have the power to make a property owner create bylaws or rules, regulations, based on someone else that's next door. Because it is a different parcel altogether, does fit into R2, and as long as they meet those regulations and the zoning ordinance, like Tom said, we're kind of at bay. Anyone else got questions, comments, concerns? Ed?
No comments. The first comment I want to make is, I'm not sure if a number of people out there understand exactly what the condominium site plan actually is. I live in a condominium site plan and they're individual homes. They're not a condo as maybe some you might perceive them to be. Many of the homes in my subdivision would fit very well in Lakes of Indianwood, so it's not small condos or condo, it's a home. And based on, I was out this morning looking at the site and there are a lot of trees that I'm going to have to come down, I get that. But if he leaves the trees up until they're needed to be cut down for the footprint of the home and beyond that, hopefully not too much, I would hope that you would have a very pleasing aesthetically looking community there, small subdivision. But just make sure you're, I just want to make sure you're aware that you're looking at homes, single-family homes. And then the other thing about the comments about listening to the people, I've been on this commission in, I don't know, now seven, eight years, and in the last few years, we have turned down three developments because a group as large as you came out to protest, but the protests were made for us not to change zoning. And we felt that it was in the best interest of the community to go forward and change the zoning, but since there was such a large outcry from the neighbors not to do so, we opted not to do so. I think one of the communities, eventually it's going to come back to haunt them, but we do listen to the people. We're here to serve the people here, the community. And I, for one, listen, and I'm very aware of your concerns, but you have to be aware too that we have to abide by the zoning and the laws. If the developer comes in with a plan that crosses all the Ts properly and dots all the Is properly, we're pretty helpless in determining, in not granting what he wants as long as he's conforming. That you need to be aware of, but we are always looking out for your best interest. Just want you to believe that, we are. And also, he's presenting an 18-home site, he could come in with 40 based on the zoning we have with this particular parcel. You need to be aware of that too. That I would, in my mind, assume you would rather see 18 homes there than 40.
Mr. Young, I know public comments are over, but may I please make a public comment?
Yeah, can I, can I hold you at bay until I get Mike discussion up here finished first? Maybe.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to comment. At the last meeting, when this came before us, I was one of the people that voted no. And part of the reason I voted no was because I felt that the developer needed an opportunity to consider the things that the public said to them at that meeting. And I appreciate the fact that you have listened to what the public said at that point in time. You've addressed the concerns. We're not going to be able to check everything off of your wish list for this project, we just can't. But I think the developer has made concessions in trying to be good neighbors. They've indicated tonight that there's some more things that they're willing to do to try to lessen the impact on your community. And we do, we listen, we do go out and look. You might not see us there, but we do go out and look at different sites. We consider things carefully. We don't just make hasty judgments because we live in neighborhoods too. We value our property as well and we want to treat all of you the same way we would want to be treated.
Thank you. With that, can I just make a note, if anybody on this commission is going to make a recommendation or a resolution or motion, that you add another number per line that says they will try to control the construction off a Drainer road? A fair attempt?
Something like the application of post-construction traffic routes or signs?
Yeah. And then I've got, how are you guys on the other side of the room? Sorry, not used to having your way over there.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Eric, if you'd like to ask a reapproach, I have to use this mic, I guess, so I can be on TV.
Yeah.
So they'd be at the little kids' table. Eric, there was a couple of concerns relative to the type of home you're going to build, right? Is there anything you can say to the people here in the public that will reassure them that the homes you're going to build will fit nicely into the Lakes of Indianwood homes that are already there? They may not be exact, right? Because I know a few of us know the type of homes you do build.
Sure.
And address some of the concerns. I know they had some concerns about the vinyl siding and some other things, and I know you use other materials or have used other materials in some of your constructions. And then maybe what's driving this 1,700 square foot minimum? Because I know you have also, I know you didn't put a maximum on there.
Sure.
But is there anything that's driving that 1,700 square foot?
Yeah, I mean, both of those are driven by the market. I mean, it's reality. I mean, if you look at the minimums that are allowed, sure, we could have gone lower and we would get people that would want to buy those, but we were conscious of what is surrounding it and we didn't want to go to the township minimums. We wanted to stay within our normal product that we built that does fit very nicely into that community. Like I said at the previous meeting, we built five or six homes in Lakes of Indianwood. And they're the exact same floor plans that we'll be offering in this subdivision. Literally, the only difference from a bylaw main item standpoint is Lakes of Indianwood requires wood painted fascian softens, which most buyers in today's world, honestly, don't even want that. If you give them the option, they want no maintenance and it to look beautiful the day they close and beautiful 15, 20 years later and not have to have it fade, peel, chip, and maintain it for years to come. So the reality is in today's market and world and the products and what they look like, you give people the option between the two, nine out of 10 are going to pick aluminum fascia and vinyl, and it looks beautiful. That's what I have on my own personal house that I built for myself. That is, that is true and factual.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Any other questions before I spit out a few? Okay. Zach, can I ask you a question, just for me and maybe some other folks out there, about Ms. Rigario's letter, she speaks to a convertible area? Can you enlighten me on that for a moment?
I will do my best. It's very nerdy state enabling legislation language. So we've touched on the fact that this is a site condominium, not a plat. In reality, it's the exact same thing on the ground. It uses a different enabling legislation from the state. Sometime in the early 90s, some clever attorneys realized that we could do a site condominium, condominium of ground versus a plat, and we can get it approved in a year or two versus five to seven years. So basically, everything in the state since Indianwood has been a site condominium. And part of the State Condominium Act requires certain language, like convertible area, expandable area, retraction, and you have to have language about that in your master deed. You have to say how it can happen or the limits on it. From a practical matter, there's a site plan that's been approved. And the township is going to require, this is the site plan. These are where the lot lines are. Here's where the street is. If you want to change it, you have to come back for a site plan amendment before this body. So it's kind of a weird appendix from the state enabling legislation. The site plan can't be changed without action by this body and the township board.
Okay.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Just for reference, on top of that, there's no area in the site plan that is noted as convertible area. So it's generic language that's required by the condo act. There's no area listed in the site plan that's actually listed as convertible area. So it's irrelevant.
Okay, commissioners, additional comments, questions, concerns?
Got one over there.
If you'd like, I was taking notes on some of the questions members of the public were asking, I could try to address them.
Yes, if you would, please.
All right. And if I missed one, my apologies, I was trying to write as quickly as I could. So one of the things we're working at trying to do is getting site plans onto the website so it's easier for members of the public to access it. If they'd been up, I think a lot of these questions would have been addressed. So on the site plan, it shows the limits of disturbed area. That's a fancy term of art that says, "We're not going to touch the dirt outside of this." So for the tamarack trees that are in the wetland, they are well past where that line is. So there shouldn't be any cutting of trees, any turning of soil outside of that boundary, which is shown on the site plan. There's a question about the triangle symbol on lot 8, and Mr. Sharp can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's just a spot that says, "Here's where the pipe opens up," and there's an outfall structure, concrete structure, so it doesn't erode the area there. There is an access easement over that, but the language in the bylaws, and this is summarizing it, actually says that this is for maintenance of the wetland. So if there's an issue with an invasive species or something that gets in there, this was something that has actually been added at my suggestion, previously there had been no way to get into the wetlands through there. So the language specifically says for maintenance purposes for that type of stuff. We'd mentioned the township doesn't really have an ability to require matching master deed or bylaws between different communities. I understand the sentiment. If it were part of a larger development like Waterstone that has many sub-associations, then that's something that could be addressed, but this is entirely different parcel. All of the outstanding items in the planning report had been addressed in the revision of the site plans. Just the basic ones that were noted were township attorney approval of the master deed, engineer approval, fire chief approval of the circulation. So those had been addressed. My understanding is that as part of the pre-construction meeting, Road Commission of Oakland County defines where you can drive your trucks, so that is something that is already addressed through there. One good suggestion was a condition that those signs be posted. I know from personal experience, sometimes it can be very difficult to get the trucks to follow, so posting that will be helpful. In fact, in one community, we got to the point where they had to pay a kid $10 an hour sitting on an office chair to keep trucks from driving where they weren't supposed to. So that would be helpful. The township does require traffic impact study, but the threshold that has been adopted is over 1,000 trips per day, which on a very rough number is about 100 extra houses. So it falls below the threshold where the township has determined that it's necessary to do that. Let's see. Let's see. Oh, there was a question about why not access the road from the north. It's an option. That's also a public street, as is Dakota Court. If they are private streets, then the owner of the streets would have an ability to limit it, but they're public streets. If there were more than 20 units, it would have to access both of those. So zoning ordinance doesn't require you to go one or the other, as long as it's a public street that the Road Commission approves. For the wetlands, I'm going to speak to a bit of a practical matter here. Has been noted, the area between the lots and the lake is a common element. So the first line of preventing docks is the association can defend it and say, "You can't put a structure on our common property." Just like in Indianwoods, if someone came up and put a shelter in one of the common areas, one of the parks, the association can say, "No, get that out. This is our property." If the association doesn't want to, any member that is a party to the master deed can enforce it. So the guy on the back lot could take action. From a practical matter, these lots are roughly, the closest ones, I just did a quick check now, is about 600 feet from the lot to the water. I can tell you, putting in helical piers for a boardwalk 600 feet is very expensive. The development to the other side, it's a much shorter distance, so it's easier. And I will tell you, my experience with code enforcement in many communities, the first people who's going to call us, the first line of defense are the neighbors. They live out there, they see it. If they see someone out there with a bobcat with a helical screw, it's probably going to be in winter, they're going to call and they're going to let us know. I guarantee that will happen, and then we can go to the plan and show that you can't do it there. Let's see. I think those were most of the ones. Were there any questions the commissioners had that were asked that I didn't touch?
I think you did pretty good.
All right.
I was trying to write as fast as I could, too, and I think I missed a couple that you covered on, so.
All right. Thank you.
Let's take your comment now.
Thank you very much. I didn't plan on speaking, but I heard a few things that...
I'm sorry. Can I get you to state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Earl Vogel. I live on La Crosse Trail, which is in Lakes of Indianwood. I was on the Lakes of Indianwood Board maybe three, four, or five years ago for a number of years. And at the time, a different individual owned this property, and I don't remember his name. But we were working with him, the board, trying to get him to design his plans so it would be more amenable to our residents. And one of the things we tried to do, of course, was get the different entrance, and I don't think we're going to get that changed, but we were trying to get him to follow our deed restrictions in terms of size of house and tree removal and materials. And we came very close. We came very close. He was strongly considering, he felt that it was in his best interest to make this lake a part of Lakes of Indianwood. And then I'm not sure what happened. He eventually sold the property, I think to Clearwood. You probably know who I'm talking about. So that was disappointing. But when I was on the board, one of my jobs was to make sure that people were following the deed restrictions and in particular, tree removal. And I don't think I was on the board more than a few weeks. And I got a call from a neighbor that there was a house being built by Clearview on Iroquois Trail, and trees were being removed. And the trees that were allowed to be removed were already removed, but a tree company was then taking down additional trees. So I drove out there, and the tree company doing it said they were told by Clearview Homes to remove those trees. And I, of course, I said, "You can't." They stopped. And I talked to the president of Clearwood, was his name Jim? Was there a Jim, President of Clearwood?
No.
Can't quite remember. But he fought it, and, you know, he was violating our deed restrictions. And we fine people, it's not a big amount of money, but he fought the fine. And I think we involved his lawyer and our lawyer, and it wasn't pleasant. And that doesn't give me confidence that they're going to follow the rules that they talked about as far as, you know, not removing any unnecessary trees. So I thought he would throw that in. But anyway, those are my points of view, so I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I heard one from the, one comment from the audience in reference to Ms. Knopf, a possible conflict of interest. It would be a conflict of interest, it would be a conflict of interest, excuse me, if she had some sort of financial gain involved in this. There is no financial gain involved in it from Ms. Knopf, so she has the ability to take a vote tonight.
But doesn't it, if she's related to this other person?
She can be related, but there has to be a financial gain attached to it. She has to have a financial interest in it.
Okay. Because that may be more business for that law firm that he works at.
I don't think so.
She does not have an interest in the law firm.
If there's no other questions or comments from the commissioners, I'm going to look for a motion or resolution to the Township Board that we either recommend or do not recommend this final site plan.
I'm going to attempt to say this. It might take me a little while because a lot of things have to be written, or, excuse me, have to be stated within this resolution or motion. So to make it valid, I think, as to everything we're trying to cover, I'll make a motion for a recommendation for final site plan for a residential site condominium, originally submitted by Lisa Shackleton on behalf of Clearview Homes for property located south of Drainer and west of La Pire and north of Manitou Lake in Section 34 of Oxford Township, known as parcel number 04-34-426-007. Whereas Lisa Shackleton, the applicant on behalf of Clearview Homes pursuant to the provisions of the Township zoning ordinance, submitted a revised application for final site plan for Manitou Hills on March 31 of 2021. And then whereas applicant submitted a six-page site plan on March 31, 2021, with a last revision date of March 23, 2021, prepared and stamped by Jennifer Schalk, a licensed professional And whereas the applicant submitted a revised six-page site plan on May 17, 2021, with a last revision date of May 6, 2021, and prepared and stamped by Jennifer Schalk, a licensed professional engineer. And whereas the applicant submitted a one-page then landscape plan on March 31 of 2021, with a last revision date of March 22, 2021, and prepared and stamped by J. Brian Delvin, excuse me, Devlin, a registered landscape architect. And whereas the applicant submitted a revised landscape plan on May 17, 2021, with a latest revision date of May 8, 2021, prepared and stamped by J. Brian Devlin, a registered landscape architect. And whereas the applicant submitted a master deed and bylaws, March 31, 2021. And then whereas the applicant submitted a revised draft master deed and bylaws on May 17 of 2021, with the latest revision of May 6, 2021, for the master deed, and on March 17 of 2021, for the bylaws, and May 6 for the 2021 for the Exhibit B included with that master deed. And whereas the Planning Commission has received reports from Zach Michaels, the Township Planning Consultant, dated May 2, 2021, and May 21 of 2021. And whereas the Planning Commission also received a report from Jim Sharp, the engineer consultant for the Township, dated May 3 of 2021, and June 1 of 2021. Then the Planning, and whereas the Planning Commission then received reports from Pete Schultz, the Oxford Fire Department Chief, dated April 12 of 2021, then in May 28 of And whereas the Planning Commission received reports from Susan Morrison, that's the Township's attorney, dated May 3, 2021, and June 1, 2021. So the latest report from the attorney is, at that point, June 1 of 2021, which is nine days ago. Whereas the Township is located in the R2 zoning, single-family zoning district, and whereas the single-family residential is a permitted use in the R2 single-family residential district. Whereas the Planning Commission at its May 13, 2021, meeting reviewed the applicant for the final site plan for Manitou Hills and private road application, and received public input at that time. That was the first time. And reviewed the application for the final site plan with that private road application and received public input. So whereas the Planning Commission at its June 10, tonight, 2021, meeting, reviewed the application for the final site plan of Manitou Hills and the private road application, and received public input. And whereas the Planning Commission, at a preliminary site plan review, granted a waiver requirement to provide sidewalks within development. And whereas the final site plan of Manitou Hills is consistent with the previously approved preliminary site plan. And whereas the final site plan of Manitou Hills does meet with changes noted in this resolution, the standards of Section 12.05A through Section 12.05O of the zoning ordinance, which is the site plan approval standards. And whereas the proposed private road does and would meet with changes noted in this resolution, the standards of the Article 11 private road of the zoning ordinance and the engineered design standards of Chapter 42 of Article 9 of Oxford Township Code. And whereas the final site plan, Manitou Hills, does or would meet with changes noted in this resolution, the standards of Article 13 of the condominium requirements of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the Township Board has final authority to approve or deny the site condominium project as provided in Section 13.5A, review and approval procedures of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the Planning Commission has the authority to approve or deny the private road application as provided in Section 11.4C2, Planning Commission Review and Determination of the Zoning Ordinance. And now this is where it gets a little more critical. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Planning Commission, by a majority vote at a duly noticed regular meeting held this 10th day of June 2021, makes a favorable recommendation to the Township Board for approval of the final site plan for Manitou Hills for property located on the south of Drainer, west of La Pire, and north of Manitou Lake in Section 34 of Oxford Township, again, parcel 04-34-426-007, to the applicant, subject to the conditions listed below. So approval of the sanitary sewer and water system by the Road Commission of Oakland County, Michigan Department Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, and Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner. Approval of the condominium documents by the Township Attorney, the Township Engineer, and the Township Planner. The applicants shall participate in a pre-construction conference, and the applicant shall provide proof of recording of approved condominium documents before permits can be issued for any clearing or construction work. Be it further resolved that the Planning Commission grants approval of the private road, subject to the conditions below. The applicant shall provide proof that an easement and maintenance agreement, either as separate documents or part of the master deed, have been recorded and construction may commence, before construction may commence, excuse me. Approval by the Road Commission of Oakland County to connect the proposed private road to Dakota Court. And construction of the private road must completely or substantially be complete within 12 months after issuance of a construction permit, or this approval shall become null and void. And it was made as a recommendation from the Chair of this commission that a construction route shall be established from Drainer Road to Dakota Court. And I think that concludes my resolution. If there's any questions regarding it, I'll try to read back that section.
You start.
I could.
The motion has been submitted.
But I think you're being cast.
Has it been supported by the...
House floor.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion amongst the commission in reference to the motion?
Just a point of housekeeping. So is the recommendation or the additional condition Mr. Berger made intended to go under Paragraph 190 as E?
No, I actually put it under 200 as D, at the very end.
That's...
Or do you want to put it under 190 as E?
I would recommend that because it kind of ties into the site condominium instead of the private road. Because most of the construction is going to be related to the development, not just the road.
I will make my amended portion of resolution to read under 190E, "A construction route shall be established from Drainer Road to Dakota Court."
Do you re-support? Okay. It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion on the motion against or amongst the commissioners? And the motion is for the recommendation. It's just to the Township Board.
That's my motion.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Spitz?
For the audience. What's being recommended? When will the Township Board take that?
The next available meeting date.
Yes.
As long as it's been, as long as the time, as long as the timetable works within the rules of the agenda items.
Would be July 14.
Okay.
Okay. We've got a motion on the table. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Bailey?
Yes.
Spitz?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Knopf?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That motion for the approval to the Township Board has been passed. So your next step would be in July with the Township Board.
You were reading off of the different places they had to get approval for they could in this building?
Yes, I was.
I did not hear Ego mentioned. Did I miss that?
You know what? You did miss it because I didn't mention it, but it was, it was, it was mentioned, I believe, but...
A.
Hang on.
It is in there?
Yes.
See, it's so confusing to me because I'm so used to calling it the DEQ anymore.
Oh, okay.
And what happens is, under their new administration and their new name, it's, I read it as the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. So that's what it's called now. So yes, it does have to have the approval of that.
Thank you.
Basically using the May 13 minutes with June 10. Figured in.
In a sense, in a sense, but with amendments. Yes.
All right. Let's move to Item 11. All right, let's move to item 11, communications and committee reports. We've got a economic development committee. It turns out we did not meet last month, but we did have some work done. I've identified the preliminary plans and engineering drawings for the gateway signs for the north and south of Oxford Township that was kind of created from my predecessor, Mr. Todd Bell. So there are a number of things that has to happen with those gateway signs. So I got a feeling between that and us revising our packets for restaurants and leisure and all those types of things, people interested in Oxford. We will have a meeting, but it'll probably be in August or late July. Item B, ordinance review committee.
We had a meeting today, and we have pretty much finalized our met, our matrix system that we're going to utilize with what would be permitted as uses within certain districts of zoning in the township and what would be required to be special, land use or not, or what fits wherever. And we think it's going to accommodate anybody's desire that wants to come into the township and do it readily by looking at this matrix to then understand what could be a permitted use or a permitted use with special land use or the necessary ingredients to develop what they would like to within the community and make it expedite things a lot quicker. That's what we're trying to do and make it more, once this matrix is available and ready on the, on the available website, it should make things way easier for our development to then occur within the township to meet the requirements necessary. And we're, I think we were finally, finally through all the comments today. Now, we're still working on other elements within the ORC meetings right now, but this has taken us several months to get to this point. And we, we spent a lot of time on it, so I really hope the public works with it because it should really help everybody out. But you have to read it. So that's what we're doing.
Well, I, I know I do this to you every couple of months, but I have another item for you?
I read it. You sent it with an email. And I talked about it to two other commissioners earlier this week and even including today.
Yeah.
But you have to let us get through some of the other things that we haven't gotten to yet because we've spent so much time on some of these other issues. So I don't want to.
I just want to make sure it gets on.
You keep throwing something else in the pot? Yeah, you keep throwing stuff in.
I know we spent last year talking about garage setbacks, driveway setbacks, plant lines, and we just need to put it on your list to look at it again.
I didn't throw it out. I just mean that we got, we got some other things we got to get done.
Yeah.
And then we can move on. I mean, we, we have a lot of stuff we need to work on.
I know.
And we, we're a volunteer-based group here, you know. We come in here and work as many times in a month that we're allowed to, basically. And some of us have a hard time getting together on all, but we're meeting several times in a month right now, so.
But if you put it on the list, if we don't make it this year, or whatever the case may be, I mean, we can.
I honestly think we're too, I think we're too late for this summer for construction activity. I mean, to be, to be real with it, it'd be something we should look at in the winter.
All right.
And then get it ready for maybe next spring or something. But right, right now, we've got other things that need to be, you know, considered as a priority.
All right, item 12. Anything else from the planner?
Yep, I will pop up. So the timeline, the shortest a zoning ordinance amendment could take effect is roughly three months. Because this body has to have a public hearing. There's about a month for the notice, and then it goes to the township board for a second reading, for first reading, for second reading.
First reading, right.
And then it's effective after it's been published. So it's actually closer to four months from when this body hold, gets ahold of it to when it actually takes place. So it does take a while. When we had another thing that is added to our ORC hop, or we had a meeting with the various consultants, Mr. Sharp, the attorneys were there about looking at revisions to the site plan review process to, to make it more predictable and less gray and fuzzy and, and help both the applicants and the residents know what to expect and how to expect it and when to expect it. So we're, we're punching things out, but we're adding things almost as fast or maybe even faster. Let's see. One other thing I've been working on to aid in the process is creation of a site plan checklist. So right now, if you're an applicant and you want to know what you have to put on the site plan, it's like a word problem. The zoning ordinance kind of has paragraph descriptions of it, mostly in Article 12. But to make it fun on the applicants, we put some other stuff in other sections to trip them up. And so I've been going through collecting them all into a nice matrix that says, here are the things you need on preliminary, here are the things you need on final. And it's going to incorporate other things from engineering standards and attorney stuff in there, too. So an applicant can just run down the thing and say, do I have this on my plans or not? So we think that will help the process quite a bit. I am going to touch a little bit on some action in Lansing. For those of you interested in local units of government being able to manage and regulate such things as gravel and sand extraction, Lansing is looking to take that away. If you're the type who likes to write to your legislators, it's SB 429, 430, and 431. Basically, if someone would want to put in a gravel pit, this takes all the approval and review process from here and puts it to the state. And one thing that's a bit troubling is the standards for noise, for example, were taken from industrial standards. So basically, how loud you can be on a factory floor is how loud this would allow you to be at the property line. I think it's somewhere 70 to 75 decibels on the property line next to residential stuff. So there's a lot of concern in the planning community. Another one that may be of interest resolves or regards the short-term rentals. So right now, most communities have language that says it's residential if you're there for at least 30 days. So the Airbnb and the other initial things that I forget aren't allowed in typical residential areas unless you adopt standards to allow it. The state is coming back and saying that's a residential use. So if you allow residential stuff, you can have one-day rental houses there. Those are SB 446 and HB 4722. And I'll leave it at that. If anyone has questions on those, you know how to get ahold of me. And that's what I got.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
Okay.
Nice.
What?
I see somebody still worth dying.
Once in a while. Get to do it. So we're going to do something a little different tonight. Instead of me telling you about the projects that are going on, what questions do you have about the manners of Westlake? Anything?
The manners of Westlake?
Huh? Manners of Westlake. Now, just north of the Polly Ann Trail on the east side of the road. A portion of that development is in the village, a portion of it is in the township. Mr. Curtis, Supervisor Curtis, and Manager Joe Young. Joe Young. Did I just say that? I did that. We did it at the meeting, too.
You're at the Village of Oregon.
Joe Mador. Sorry, I apologize. Yes, Mr. Mador, they were both at the meeting along with members of the Township Planning Commission, Mr. Young, and I don't know, the planning commission chairman in the village.
Oh, I forgot as well.
Yeah. So anyway, they were there and it was a very.
Does that have to have an intergovernmental agreement to do that, then?
There would be. Yeah, we talked a little bit about, you know, utilities, you know, who would be, where the utilities would be coming from.
Yeah.
The roadways. Yeah, lots of, lots of things. But it was a very good discussion. I think that it will be coming forward to you and it will need to be, in our opinion, it would be best to do it as joint planning commission meetings instead of the applicant coming here and then going to the village and getting different stuff. It'll be one big meeting. This was previously brought forward about, geez, 10 years ago, Tom, do you remember that?
You think we got any tricky soils in there? Think we got any tricky soils in there?
I don't know what they have in there. They haven't done their soil bores and things.
Okay.
But I think Tom was on the commission at the time.
Okay.
When this came through.
You'll wait and see then.
Before. And that was what they did. They had joint meetings and put everything together, though. So it's going to be.
It's actually a nice plan.
It's going to be apartments.
Plan was a great plan.
Yeah.
But, you know, they're going to have some, they're going to have some work.
It's redwood apartments, in case you care to, you know, look at the names or something. They say that they have a very high occupancy rate, and they kind of gave some rough numbers of the square footage is and what the, what the monthly rent would be. So, I mean, it seemed like a very positive thing, I would say.
Well, there's all kinds of things that come up.
Would you agree with that?
How you get rid of garbage and this and that and all the others.
Yeah, yeah. How we just share services. We have the Oxford Sheriff. They have, you know, they have their own police department. So there'll be a lot of intergovernmental agreements associated with it. But they're just doing their due diligence as well. Hopefully it comes forward. It looks like a nice, nice project. I can't remember the exact number of units. Do you remember, Mike?
Eleven buildings and on each side. And maybe four per building or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven or something.
I can't remember. It was like 80-ish or something, 80 apartments. Okay, anything else?
Thanks.
What's happening with the high school property?
One, one quick comment, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I got to answer here. She got a question.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't hear you.
High school property?
Yeah.
As far as the clearing goes?
Yeah.
And so forth. So they, the schools, when that was bid out, they received a price for the overall work. They did an alternate bid for a deduct price, which gave the contractor an additional 90 days to complete the work. They accepted that deduct price, bringing it down even further. But what that did is it basically gives the contractor more time. So that's why the trees have been cleared and they haven't been cleaned up at this time. The site itself is just being cleared and land balanced right now. There is no plan for a development in there. They don't know.
Are there any soil erosion control happening between?
There will be. We generally allow them to.
Not for what they're doing right now.
To take the trees down first. Otherwise, the trees just fall on the silt fence and everything that's along North Oxford Road. If you look the way that it's graded, that's at the high point. And so everything drains from the safety path there onto their property. Nothing is draining from their site across the safety path.
I know from personal experience that when they were working, putting in the parking lot and expanding the high school years ago, that the runoff went much farther than just that piece that they're working on right now.
Okay.
And it did cause some issues on other properties.
Okay.
I was just curious.
That was from the pond. They had, they had a failure of that pond up there is what happened. So yes, it ran across that property and down onto store and lock, obviously. But that was not because of a soil erosion issue. That was because their pond, they didn't construct it properly and it actually broke in one of the locations. So when it was filled up, it just, all went out. But yes, we do keep an eye on that. They do have a soil erosion.
Because they've got silt fence up where they're doing the parking lot, but there's nothing between that section and the property.
And that's been brought up. And if it goes on much longer, he's supposed to finish clearing the trees and get that silt fence up right away. If it goes on much longer, then we will make him put that silt fence up right away, even if he planned, you know, if he's not coming back for 30 days or 60 days or something, that will, we will make him put that silt fence up there. But yeah, there are no plans on the site right now. They're just land balancing it out.
Right.
I just wanted to make one comment, and everybody exited the room so darn fast, but I wish we would have made it earlier. I appreciate when people take time to come to a meeting and, and give their input to us because it doesn't often happen. So thank you for that time and effort that you put into what your input was for this evening, even though sometimes we can't make everybody happy. And, and so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Good. I guess my only comment would be going back on this six months, within I have a public hearing. We could have got a lot of this initial stuff, you know, information and everything more.
Previously, you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the initial information came out in, what, December, flash here, and then we bounced around with the press meeting versus hearing versus meeting.
And I gotta be honest with you, and I guess I'm just speaking off the cuff now, but the pandemic and everything else didn't help us much either because Zoom meetings just doesn't, they don't work well with public hearings and they don't work well with public information, how you can do face-to-face like now. I appreciate this type of meeting 10 times more than I do a Zoom meeting for that purpose. And so we kind of got caught up in the Zoom group and what we tried to do in putting meetings back together again. It was difficult. I, I agree. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Spiz, Mr. Bailey, out in the parking lot there. You guys got anything today? No?
I'm going to go on the door already.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Well, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:50.
That was a serious motion.
It's the longest motion I've ever.